All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the workshop to order. It's April 18th, 2023. I've got 1:35. So we're called workshop to order. Real quick, before we jump into the workshop this morning. So at workshops, for folks who've never been to one before, we don't take public comment at the workshops, but there are multiple ways to comment to commissioners about anything that you've heard today or will hear today. Some of the ways you can comment, probably the most direct and quick way, is you can send an email to a commissioner's office. You could call a commissioner's office. All of our contact info is on leegov.com. Another way is to come to the next county commission meeting. So we're not going to make any final decisions today. It's really just a workshop to discuss multiple transportation topics. No final decisions will be made today. Before we make any final decisions, it would appear on a formal county commission agenda, and that's a great time to come and make a public comment as well. So just wanted to provide that for anybody who came today looking to comment at this workshop. There won't be any, but there are those opportunities in the future. All right, with that, Mr. -- oh, yeah, Commissioner Pendergrass?
We did have public comment before this meeting today. It was about 11:30 this morning.
There was. There was a public comment period earlier this morning at 9:30 a.m., but I realize some people didn't make that meeting. So, okay, let's go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Djarla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, good afternoon. This afternoon at this workshop, we would like to present to you the adjustment of the tiered transportation projects and a conversation about Little Pine Island Bridge and that project as well. Someone asked Mr. Harner, Deputy County Manager, to present the item. Introduce the items.
Thank you, Roger. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Today, as Roger stated, we're going to go over our annual tier process. What we're going to talk about, a few items that we're going to talk about specifically, are the cost increases to Tier One. Each year, we come back, and there's always a cost increase. We have another one this year, of course. We're also going to talk about the number of projects that have been added or moved up in the process of the tiers. And we're also going to talk to you a little bit about the projects for potential federal funding and PDNE, doing a PDNE for each of those projects so we can look at infrastructure dollars in the future. On the second presentation, we're going to be talking about Little Pine Island Bridge. Little Pine Island Bridge was a priority prior to the storm. It was in our tiers prior to the storm. Following the storm, obviously, it sustained more severe damage. It has now moved up to number five in Tier One. The cost, if we were to do this project in the timeframe that's established in the tiers, it'll be about $14 million. Today, we're going to talk to you about a few options that will be quite a bit cheaper. Also, well, that's it. I covered everything. So with that, I will turn it over to Rob Price.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Rob Price with DOT. Today, we're going to provide an update on our transportation project tiers, along with some discussion on options to repair the Little Pine Island Bridge in Malashe. For the tier discussion, we're going to show you the results of the priority ranking, the various projects in the similar format that you've seen every year and are used to seeing. We're also going to discuss some funding opportunities with you today as well. The questions we hope to obtain your direction to answer today are whether you agree with the priority rankings and the tiers as they're laid out, in addition to whether you have any questions or additional input you'd like to provide for us. There are 13 projects in Tier One this year, up from 12 projects last year. We've updated the cost estimates for all Tier One projects based on the most recent basis of cost estimates from FDOT, and the total cost of the Tier One projects has increased 28%, or approximately $308 million. Of those 13 Tier One projects, seven of those are considered fully funded for construction. Similar to years past, some of the causes for the cost increases relate to supply chain issues, inflation, increased construction costs due to high demand, and increases in land value for property acquisition. These cost increases have the potential to cause delays in the delivery of projects on time based on balancing of our transportation budget. Just for some context, recently, FDOT released an update to their basis of estimates, and the price of asphalt has increased from $97 a ton to $105 a ton. Concrete, $1,146 a cubic yard is now around $1,651 a cubic yard. Dirt has gone up from $14 a cubic yard to $20 a cubic yard. That's a 52% increase in the price of dirt. And the estimated cost to build a four-lane road is about $6.5 million a mile versus now it's $7.5 million a mile. It's a 15% increase. Some highlights of the priority rankings this year include the addition of the Little Pine Island Bridge to Tier One, which we're going to discuss further with you in the second half of this workshop. We've also updated the Cape Coral Bridge to show a full replacement of that structure, as was directed by the board in our February 6 workshop and follow-up board action on February 21st at the regular meeting. There's also several new projects that we want to highlight that have been added to the tiers two and three, including new widening phases of Corkscrew Road, widening of the two-lane section of Joel Boulevard, and also various projects along Sunshine Boulevard in anticipation of the Alico Connector project. This slide is a slide that you guys, the board, has seen in multiple years past. 2015, the board approved criteria for us to evaluate our CIP projects to help prioritize how they lay out. Some of those features are level service deficiencies, multimodal features, system continuity and preservation, return on investment, whether we're getting matching funds from the state or federal government, and our primary focus, which is safety. In light of the increase in costs we are seeing, it's critical to make as many projects as possible eligible for alternative funding methods like state and federal grant monies. We will continue to bring decisions to the board to determine whether to perform PDNE studies on future projects in order to be eligible for federal and state funding. But alternative funding sources are going to be critical as we move forward with the construction of these projects due to the anticipated cost increases. Here, we've highlighted some projects that we anticipate being able to accept federal or state funding to construct. We've sought a $6 million earmark to fund the PDNE phases for the Hickory Bridges. The bridges are due for replacement, and they were also damaged by Hurricane Ian. We also anticipate performing a full PDNE study for the Midpoint Bridge widening that will set the project up for federal funding. FDOT is nearing the completion of the PDNE phase for the Burnt Store Road, the final four-laning section of Burnt Store Road up to the Charlotte County line. And the Cape Coral Bridge is in the midst of the PDNE phase right now. That will make it eligible for alternative funding opportunities. This should be a familiar slide as well. This is our slide for our Tier One projects. As I said earlier, there's 13 projects now in Tier One, up from 12 last year. As a reminder, these Tier One projects include projects that are already in our five-year capital improvement program in addition to the projects that we anticipate delivering in the next 10 years. You can see that the Little Pine Island Bridge is the only new project that has been inserted into Tier One. Otherwise, the list mirrors the priorities the board established last year. Little Pine Island Bridge was identified to be deficient as a part of the FDOT bridge inspection for the fall of 2022. We coordinated with the state to help identify funding options to replace the bridge, and we've programmed, and they have programmed, $4.9 million in their work program for design to start in 2025 and construction to begin in 2027 to replace the bridge. It's estimated to cost $14.4 million in 2027 to design and construct. We've also updated the cost estimates for the rest of the projects in Tier One, and you can see comparison to last year's cost estimate in the column next to it, along with a percent change for each project. These costs represent an estimated cost for the build year of the project. So we've taken the cost estimate now and grown it out to the year it's expected to be delivered. The cost for the Tier One projects has increased to an estimated $1.4 billion, which reflects just under 30% increase from last year. As a result of the cost increases, the big change from last year to this year is we can no longer show the second phase of Ortiz from MLK to Luckett Road, including the Luckett Road widening, as being fully funded in the next five years. This project was the lowest-ranked project on our priority list previously, and with the cost increases, we have to delay this section for at least another year. In response to requests in previous budget workshops, we've also identified the anticipated funding sources in Tier One on the last column.
So before we move from this slide, so these are projects, you said, that are in our five-year capital improvement program, and then other projects that we might need in the next 10 years? Is that what you said?
Yeah, these are the projects that are expected to be delivered within the next 10 years.
Okay. So I just saw Commissioner Pendergrass must -- is that the CIP you grabbed? I think it would have been really helpful for us to have that in front of us for today's meeting. Could you tell me which ones of these are in the five-year plan?
Yeah. Project One is in the five-year plan. Big Carlos is already out to bid and awarded. Do you want to give them that copy?
Thanks so much.
Yeah, I asked for that because I thought it would be more helpful.
Yeah, it would have been really helpful to have that. Absolutely.
Lehigh Acres paving program is a major maintenance project, so that's in the plan. Ortiz, four-laning, is ready to bid now. Little Pine Island Bridge is going to show up in the CIP this year, unless FDOT builds it for us, as we're going to talk about in the second half of this workshop. Littleton Road is waiting on the last couple of properties to acquire. Corkscrew Phase Two is ready for us to go to bid as soon as we get the permit. So the first seven projects, and then Alico, four-lane, we're going to be bringing forward before the end of this year, first part of next year, the widening of the existing two-lane section from Airport Hall Road to Green Meadow.
I think, you know, Commissioners, I'm eager to engage in conversation and hear where you're all at on this too. But I think, you know, one of the things I've noticed, I've been here now, October will be 10 years, and some of the projects on this list have been there for 10 years and maybe even before that. Like, I guess my question is, like, when do we start to see some of these get completed? Because the costs have just continued to go up, you know, for the last 10 years. Commissioner Pendergrass, you had a question?
Yeah, so thank you for bringing that, Mr. Ham. And that's one of the reasons why I ask especially because we're always looking, these projects take so long, and it's unfortunate because a lot of it is too permanent. And I think we talked about that at our last strategic planning meeting last year. That's something I'm going to bring up when I meet with Roger for this year for our strategic workshop. We were asking about how we can accelerate some of these projects. Obviously, we did with the Alico project. We did do the PDNE study, which we saved six, seven years off of that. But there's some other projects on here that I know we'll probably talk about too, Rob. And under Tier Two, if the board recognized the number 16, 16 in favor of priority, the Buckingham Road through Orange River Boulevard, I think based upon staff recommendations and the numbers of the concurrency there, the trips in that area of East Lee County, it's definitely, that should be moved up to even Tier Two. But again, Commissioner Ham, like you said, these projects on Tier One, a lot of them are in the, you know, they're being done, and we're going to have the ribbon cutting soon for the Burnt Store Road, it's been going on for 10 years. But how can we accelerate some of these projects even sooner than what they are currently proposed now for completion? Or even start dates? That's my question. We talked about that last year, the strategic planning, how to accelerate some of these projects. We all know it's kind of some of this regulatory, but some of it's funding element too. But we talked about that too, as far as bonding. We need to accelerate some of these road projects. We see our area continue to grow after COVID. We see the increase of population here now with the hurricane. We see the increase of workforce here, and the area continues to grow. So we definitely need to get ahead of the curve here on some of these projects. And that's why I'd ask about number 16, moving that up to, in the future, if there's any discussion about moving some of these projects even faster up to Tier One.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can we stay on that point for just a minute and talk about your instructions for us to expedite these projects to the extent that we can? And I think you're ready, or Dave, what do you guys want to handle that?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. When we first started this exercise back in 2015, you had four projects you wanted to get done. Alico, Homestead, Estero, and Burnt Store. They're all done. Burnt Store, we cut the ribbon on next week. The first nine, like Rob said, Three Oaks, Big Carlos, Ortiz, Little Pine Island Bridge, Littleton, Corkscrew Road Phase Two, the Alico Connector, they're all going to start within the year. So they're getting started here with the Cape Coral Bridge and the full PDNE process. So they are moving.
And then Commissioner Pendergrass, we'll get to this in a bit later slide, but we need to have a conversation about bonding capacity and these projects and moving them along at a pace that people will find acceptable. But we'll cover that a little bit later.
And how about the permanent regulatory process too? Because like, when I talk to staff about item number, say number 23 priority, the Corkscrew Road out from Alico to Verdana. That's like, we're doing the Corkscrew Phase One now. Once that's done, then this one's looking to be in 2030, I believe it is. So to accelerate that even sooner, without having all the funding there, we could start the land acquisition and permitting design before that to expedite that project, couldn't we?
Ready?
And Commissioner, again, we have to make a cumulative decision whether we want to go PDNE to allow ourselves the ability to get state and federal funding or not. If we buy properties without doing it through the federal process, we have taken ourselves out of that position. So it's a decision we'll have to make.
And if I may, Roger, Commissioner, one of the issues that we have is we have already bonded $100 million. I think that that is limiting us on bonding capacity. That's why we're talking about PDNE, because there are infrastructure dollars coming down the pipe that will allow, if we don't have the PDNE, we can no longer, we're not, those dollars are no longer available to us. So that, right at this point, we don't have an option other than potentially PDNE. And if we go pay-as-you-go, it does push those projects further back because we're relying on GIF and impact fee dollars.
Real quick, one more question. Buckingham Road, Orange River Boulevard extension, that's all residential. Would that be qualified for urban housing funding? We're looking at receiving being affordable housing, infrastructure for that area? This is all housing, no commercial really? Because I know some scenarios we put out there that that sort of money can be used for infrastructure for affordable housing.
I don't think we have, and Glenn, you can help me with this one, but I don't think we have a clear answer on that yet. We'd have to look into if CDBGR dollars could be used out in that area on those roads. I guess we have to build the case.
Ready to move on to Tier Two then, I guess? Yeah, okay.
So this slide identifies the Tier Two project. These projects are viewed as being delivered in the 10- to 20-year range. Of note, on this slide is the Buckingham Road four-laning project, which Commissioner Pendergrass mentioned. This has jumped from Tier Three to Tier Two this year based on the ranking criteria. We've identified a need to extend the limits of the Buckingham Road project further to the south to include the intersection with Cemetery Road instead of the previous limits at Orange River Boulevard to help address intersection deficiencies due to the significant growth that we are seeing in the northern sections of Lehigh Acres. We've also identified two new Tier Two projects to widen Sunshine Boulevard to four lanes. We'll be widening the section of Sunshine Boulevard from State Road 82 to 23rd Street Southwest as a part of the Alico Connector project in order to receive the traffic from Alico. And there's two projects here from 23rd to Lee Boulevard and from Lee Boulevard to 75th Street to continue the four-laning further north to the current terminus of Sunshine Boulevard. You'll also see Phase Three of the Corkscrew widening from Alico Road to Verdana Village here in Tier Two. It's up from Tier Three last year. One important factor to note relates to the cost estimates that we show for the Tier Two and Tier Three projects. These do not include the costs associated with right-of-way acquisition because it's just too soon for us to identify the right-of-way acquisition costs right now. I know if there's any questions on Tier Two, I'll move to Tier Three real quick. The Tier Three projects are shown on this slide. These are the projects that are expected to be delivered in the 20- to 30-year timeframe. Some highlights on the Tier Three list include the extension of Sunshine Boulevard from its current terminus at 75th Street Southwest to State Road 80, which was recently added to the MPO's long-range plan. This will provide critical relief as a third north-south connector to Lehigh Acres. Also shown in Tier Three is a new project on Corkscrew Road to widen the existing two-lane roadway from Verdana Village to the county line to four lanes based on growth projections. We've also added some sections of six-laning on Corkscrew Road from Firehouse Lane to Alico Road in the Tier Three list as well in planning for anticipated future needs to six-lane this roadway. So that concludes our presentation on the updated transportation priority rankings. Again, does the board have any, you agree with the rankings? Do you have any questions or changes you'd like to make? And that you'd like to see us work into the priorities?
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, before we get to that piece of the conversation, please, we'd like to talk about our number of dollars available for these projects and what we're facing. So Pete, can you help us out?
Commissioners, we have bonding capacity available with our toll bridges. So for Cape Coral and Midpoint, we'll be looking at bonding portions of those projects, significant portions. Potentially also the completion of Burnt Store Road. We'll probably start an investment-grade traffic and revenue study in about March 2025, which is a little more than a year before we'd start construction of the Cape Coral Bridge because that study can't be more than a year old. We have maxed out our bonding capacity with gas tax. So last year, we issued $100 million gas tax bond to pay for a combination of projects. Alico Road Connector, a little bit of Big Carlos, and Eileen, was it Corkscrew, a little bit of Corkscrew? And a little bit of Corkscrew. So that's going toward three projects to fund those projects. After that, whatever is left over in gas taxes each year that doesn't pay for debt service goes toward maintenance and operations. Not operations, but capital projects. And so the remaining revenue source that we have for road projects is federal funding and federal grants through infrastructure legislation. And that's why we have to do PDNE studies because if we don't do PDNE studies, then we're not, we don't have the availability of that federal infrastructure funding. So when we talk about accelerating projects, we can have that discussion about accelerating projects, but on a pay-as-you-go basis, we don't currently have the ability to accelerate projects because we don't have any additional revenue source.
Pete, would you also talk about growth increment funds for just a minute?
Yeah. So growth increment funding, Commissioners. And you all know about that. That's a formula to use some general fund money each year for road projects. It's been exclusively used for road projects. And over the last eight years, we've used about $88.4 million of growth increment funding. That has all gone toward the projects you're seeing in Tier One right now. We will have another growth increment this coming year that based on, and growth increment is always based on the previous year's tax base, that will be fairly significant by the formula, but I don't believe that we will be able to fund that based on what has happened with Hurricane Ian. We'll be able to fund a growth increment, but it won't be to the size that the formula shows. And that's something that we'll talk to you all about when we have our budget assumptions workshop in a couple of weeks.
So Commissioners, if we all recall, we've been having this conversation for a couple of years now. What we try to do is talk about things that are coming in the next year, or two years, or three years. And we've been at your direction, and it was a good direction, doing as many of these projects pay-as-you-go as we can, as we possibly can, to avoid having to borrow money, use up our bonding capacity, and pay all the interest charges. We're at a point now where we have maxed out our ability to borrow money for these transportation projects. And as Pete says and others, that's why we need to concentrate on federal funds, which require the PDNE studies in order to qualify. Otherwise, we, there are funding sources that are not currently available to us, but, you know, we need to, that's why some of the timing has changed given our lack of additional bonding capacity and increasing costs. Rob?
All right. If there's any additional questions, we'll move on to the Little Pine Island Bridge portion of the discussion.
Question to answer before we move on?
Commissioner, we, you know, we, you had some questions and comments about these, the changes in Tier One and Tier Two in particular, but really haven't told us that unless you're just not ready to yet. If that's a, if you agree with the recommendation on the changes. And it may be that you need more information or you need time to assimilate what you've heard and need some more, need to talk about a little more in briefings, but your call.
I mean, I'll share with you the feedback that I hear pretty much daily from just residents is traffic's really bad. And so, you know, my personal priority would be whatever we can do to build capacity, add capacity to our roadways right now to try and relieve congestion, you know, and get people to and from work quicker is probably the biggest priority that I think the residents share with me. They want us to, see us address, you know, is how can we alleviate the congestion that we feel? And yes, rush hour in the morning and rush hour in the afternoon is definitely worse. But it's become an all-day event now where traffic is just, takes an hour to get anywhere, and you don't even leave the county sometimes. So I say all that to say, when I look at the Tier One projects, I would like to make sure that we focus really heavily on projects that add capacity and relieve congestion. I think it's important to do projects that are maintenance-related, like the repaving program, like the bridge replacements. And while those are super necessary for safety reasons, it's also hard to hear the complaints every day about congestion and not try to put our money there. So I guess that's where I'm at. I think congestion relief and adding capacity is a priority for me.
Well, Mr. Chair, I agree on one of the points. I think that you have to have a component of this. The priority is reducing congestion. The priority is getting the best relief. But I think the other element is where are we paying for it or how are we paying for it? I mean, bridges are easier to do, to replace, when we have the ability to bond a bridge. So it's a Tier One project that we have the funds to do. I think the priority is we tier one projects, we prioritize those to your degree on congestion relief and on what our shortfall or revenue stream is lacking to achieve that. And loudly and clearly is that we have a capacity, funding capacity issue. And we could rank these as number one in tier, but maybe what we may want to consider is what's the greatest relief from congestion to number one and try to tackle it that way as opposed to Tier One and just having all these projects is great. But when we're $310 million over, we have to kind of prioritize within Tier One and come into the priorities, you know, one through eight are the projects we can do for two reasons. One, we have a funding source that's very clear and identifiable. It's, we're going to go bond it for tolls. Or two, we're going to get the greatest relief from a congestion point of view. I think we have to look at this. So to your point, Roger, I don't have a true appreciation when I see Tier One project. And, you know, I look at any one item you want to talk about. Corkscrew Road, Four Lane. and, you know, I look at any one item, you want to talk about Corkscrew Road, 4L, Benhill Griffin, and we have impact fees, gas tax, DOT, and debt. So I don't know what bucket goes, where we taking the money out of. So I appreciate that there's three or four different revenue streams that are coming from that, but at some point in time, I look at a matrix of saying, we have X capacity in toll, we have X capacity in impact fees, we have X capacity in gas tax, we have X capacity in DOT, we have X capacity. And then we also prioritize what needs to be in PDNE, because the sources shadow funding and now give us the relief we need. I think we identify the products that are lacking funding, but maybe have a, you know, a good congestion, so we understand that maybe item number nine is going to give us great relief from a congestion point of view, but we have any issue with the funding.
Yes, sir.
Trying to try and break it down into a different matrix. This is helpful, one, two, and three, but I think we're all trying to deal with the same thing we hear from the constituent. How do we reduce congestion? And where do we get our greatest return on investment to reduce congestion? And/or what is the easiest to fund from what source they may be funding for?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, you all make these really good points on capacity and congestion relief and available dollars. Would be helpful if we see if the ranking changes, if we elevate the number of points given for capacity and congestion, and also show you by, by revenue source, available dollars that might be applied, and whether or not there is surplus in any of those categories. Is that helpful?
Yeah, and that would just give us a matrix to clearly see.
Sure.
I can't appreciate the $310 million increase, because I don't know exactly where the deficiency in the funding sources is.
Okay.
And if that means we're $310 million over, and we're going to have to find four projects that we're going to have to do and go to PDNE to go to the federal government, then at least I understand what my mission is.
Yes, sir.
Kind of deal with each project as we can, and what's left over that are problematic for us.
Okay, we'll do that analysis and bring it to you.
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Commissioner, Mike?
Another element that always goes into this is congestion is caused by more cars on the road in most cases, which is caused by more rooftops and so on and so forth. So when I look at Corkscrew Road, for instance, obviously down in my district and stuff, and I look at where we're going there, from all the way from 75 all the way out to Wild Blue, to Belatera, to beyond, I mean, the growth is going that way, because that's where land is available. That's where people need to go. People, it has to be built. And so with that comes, you know, the increase in density, increase in traffic. So I think as we go through this, part of why I look at it is what element of the population, not element, but what numbers of the population are we trying to address? And when you go out there, it's, it's hard to justify, we have to build somewhere, that's where the land's available. And, and so that's where it gets built, and that causes the congestion. I'm, I'm big on developing communities, so people don't have to travel from, you know, the place, the 75. We went through that a number of issues ago. People say, "I got kids to get to school, I need to drop," you know, "I need a Publix, you know, out there, Publix is going up now," and so on and so forth. I think as we create those communities, we're going to look at traffic a little bit differently. But in the interim phase, you know, we've got to have the capacity issue addressed.
Yes, sir. Commissioner, I'm.
Commissioner, may I? Yeah, Commissioner Penegras, did you have something?
Is there anything besides the funding element, is there something else we could be doing to expedite some of these projects? Like Commissioner Hammond said, we've been talking about all these projects for years. I understand transportation projects will start stuff, I've never seen it finish while in office, but is there anything we can do to reduce some of the regulatory process to go through to get some of these roads built sooner, to reduce congestion?
The PDNE process is an arduous process, granted, but they're, they're saying four years for PDNE, then they want a two-year, they can reduce to one for alignment study. Even, I mean, the roads we're doing, the Alico extension going up to 82, going through land that's not developed yet, that if we're doing a PDNE, they'd really need an alignment study. But even the roads that were widening, that we do a PDNE on, they're requiring alignment study, you'd be wide 50 feet to the left, 50 feet to the right type thing, so it's just a time-consuming thing. I think it's taken, with the two-year alignment study and four-year PDNE, it's six years for PDNE, one year to take it to the completion and design, and the mostly projects in question are about two years of construction. So there's 10 years, if we started now, to get to the finished product.
So commissioners, the, the advantage to having adequate revenue to avoid that PDNE process is, first of all, we, it reduces the amount of time from concept to construction, while at the same time, we're doing the same environmental studies that would otherwise be required in a PDNE. But based on the federal process, the timing of that, of that whole thing is what drives the, how long it takes. The, the, the public input, the public meeting process is, has to be staged over what period of time, Randy?
The need for process requires a public hearing to take place, and then a public meeting, and then a final public hearing. You have to have the plans laid out for a matter of four or five months. We had to do it down at the Beach Library for the Big Carlos Bridge, there's just a lot of steps that have to take place. Again, you could, you could reduce that time, say, a project for two years of construction, the PDNE included would be a 10-year completion time, without the PDNE, it'd be a six-year if we did not do a PDNE.
Do you, do you guys have any, maybe Glenn, I don't know, is there any legislative or policy change we could, we could lobby for? Maybe we could work with NICO, maybe we could work with Florida Association of Counties to lobby for some sort of changes to the process? I mean, I, I guess, you know, the, the thing I'd like to know is how long, so say it's a two-year alignment study, well, how much of that two years do we spend just waiting on an answer from some government agency to tell us yes or no if what we submitted is correct? I mean, and what could we do to guarantee a shorter timeline on that? Or what could we do to maybe even have the ability to, I don't know, self-certify that we did that, and then, you know, come hold us liable later if we didn't do it right? I don't, you know, any, are there any policy changes we could advocate for? I realize that's not a quick fix, but maybe it's something we could do for future generations to try and help them out?
What I run into, and I understand there's a process in place, we have to obviously go through the regulatory process of its land acquisition, but like, for example, we talk to people in general public, and they're like, "Well, you guys could build a bridge in three weeks."
Yeah.
Thanks to the governor and the state, why could it take 10 years to build this road? So it's, obviously that was, the bridge was already in place, that was, the permit was already done for the original design. But yeah, it basically takes leadership ahead of us to say, "Yes, we're going to do this, we'll get the permit tomorrow." So that's the problem we're running to, when you hear two years for the PDNE study, or the six years for this, and that's where the timeline is, the time we talked about two years ago, and we're still talking about it today. It holds our staff back from happening, and then you have to go through procurement to get the project started. That's why I said like earlier, for example, the Alico Road extension, or Corkscrew next phase, if we know we're going to do it, why not start doing, if it's 2030, why not start doing, acquiring the property now, at least the design part of it, to expedite that? But I know it's, it's still, it's a funding source, you're moving Tier Two to Tier One, and you're just adding low Tier One up, we can't afford to do the projects. That's the frustration, because people still, you can build a bridge in three weeks, why can't you do this road, and why does it take 10, 10 years?
Mr. Chair? Commissioner, two things here. One is, we hear the same thing, same frustration, you build a bridge in, in, actually it was, what, repaired in three days, four days, whatever that was? Well, when that, when the trucks started rolling across that bridge, and Governor, you knew the Governor was here, so was the State Secretary of Transportation, and I had a chance to ask him, "How on earth did you guys do that?" And his response was, at the Governor's orders, they, they pulled every resource off of every other transportation project in state along with the dollars to dedicate them to that project. There were hundreds of trucks lined up with material to dump in the pass and create that bridge. And the same thing happened repairing the Sanibel Causeway. We simply don't have those kinds of resources available, and I know that that's no, that doesn't give the, the public experiencing all this congestion any warm, fuzzy feelings, but that's, it's accurate to say.
In short, in short circumstances, we were all there, we saw that, and I get it, it's frustrating when people ask us, and they expect, "Why does it take so long?" When they see, when you want to do something, you can do it, if you just put all your resources towards it.
Yes, sir. And Randy, the second.
And that comes back to what Commissioner Ryan was saying, we have, we got three projects on Tier One, or we could have 30. So which one's the most important to us as far as relief, congestion, and safety? Which one should we focus on to get those done faster?
Right. Randy, second part?
Well, if we did a PDNE on every project we have on here right now, you run the risk of, if you don't build it within five years, the permits go south, so you have to renew. However, we could look into doing the PDNEs now, knowing the permit's going to go south, and then at some point just renewing the environmental part, or the, or the, you know, the protected species part, or something like that. We, we ran into that risk on Big Carlos during the COVID episode, where we had to renew some of them, and it looked like we were going to pay about $400,000 for this permit or that permit. We, we ended up not paying that, but you would, you would, you could expedite it, but you know you're going to pay something to expedite by years.
Randy, if, if we were to take that risk, could we start right-of-way acquisition sooner?
We could.
Any thoughts on how much sooner? Or not a question to be answered today?
If we started the PDNE process, and we know we're going to go to the federal process, and we start getting, we got to get to at least 60% design before we can acquire properties. So we get to that point faster, we could start acquiring properties, then we could shorten it by a few years probably, then when, if a permit happened to expire, we knew that was going to happen, and bite that bullet and pay that extra type thing.
So along, Mr. Chair, you will, along the matrix that I was looking at.
Sorry.
Along the matrix that I was looking at and advocating before, we could also identify some potential projects that would give us congestion relief and would put a dollar amount associated with if we had to advance the necessary dollars to expedite that project. So again, I'm still trying to understand how do we get the greatest return? But part of that has to be what projects can we accelerate, and what dollars might they require, and then what may be at risk? But at least we can start to have a more granular, this is great, but I'd like to go two or three levels deeper down, to have some real conversations, to talk about a project and say, "Okay, we look like we're funded, great. We're not funded, and, you know, this is a project that's going to give us great relief. We may want to accelerate and do this." Okay? Those are the types of things we could look at, I think, and have in more detail. Right now, to have 50 projects, 37 projects, it's just tough to.
Right.
Put them in real priority. I'm trying, just trying to get them from congestion. I think we're all saying, how do we expedite and get the greatest congestion with the dollars we have available?
So commissioners, on this topic, if we, we will do the analysis with emphasis on adding capacity, relieving congestion, and then capacity by funding source. And we'll also take a look at how we can expedite in ways like early acquisition and right-of-way, understanding that there's a risk and the permits expiring, and what would have, what we'd have to do to renew those permits. That, that do it, you think?
I think that would hit it right on the head. We also then would identify exactly what we're putting at risk.
Commissioners?
Yeah.
Okay?
I think so, yeah.
Okay. Randy, Dave, Rob, you got it?
Sir.
Okay, thank you. All right, Rob.
All right. So the next thing we want to talk to the board about is the Little Pine Island Bridge. So we'd like to get direction from the board on how, how you wish for us to move forward, and you're going to see in a few slides, there's a couple of options. The Little Pine Island Bridge is the westernmost bridge in Matlachay. It's the one that's closest to Pine Island. The bridge was designed in 1974 and constructed in 1977. The county had identified some repairs in our inspection of the bridge in 2021, and we brought forward an agenda item for $150,000 worth of repairs on April 5th, 2022, to the board meeting. Subsequently, FDOT did another inspection in August of 2022, which indicated the bridge qualified for replacement. We were in the process of completing those repairs that were awarded by the board when Hurricane Ian happened last fall. We coordinated with FDOT on funding opportunities for the replacement of the bridge after their inspection report, and they programmed a total of $4.9 million starting in 2025 and continuing through 2027 in their most recent work program to design and start construction of the replacement bridge. Based on our tiers presentation, the cost estimate to build a new bridge and design it in 2027 is estimated at just over $14 million. Hurricane Ian did a real number on this bridge. The seawalls protecting the bridge approaches were completely destroyed, and that caused significant soil loss along the, both the bridge approaches, as depicted in the shaded areas on this slide. As a result, both approach slabs of this bridge failed after the hurricane. There was also significant scour experience throughout the channel under the bridge. Scour is a measurement of the underwater soil loss at the pilings of the bridge, and this soil loss is critical in maintaining the strength of the foundation of the bridge. On the east end, we saw 21 feet of scour. On the west end, we saw 11 feet. FDOT completed temporary repairs to the approaches to restore traffic to Pine Island, but further repairs are still required. The end vents are still exposed, making the bridge vulnerable to future storm events. As you can see in the picture on the bottom right of this slide, the piles are still exposed under the repaired approaches. The foundations of the bridge are also classified as scour critical as a result of the damage sustained from Hurricane Ian. We've already had to add additional pavement on the bridge approaches due to the settlement, which is evidence that further repairs are required. FDOT has identified two options to restore the bridge facility to pre-Ian conditions. Option A is additional repairs to further stabilize the bridge. This option would require a single-lane closure for up to six months on Pine Island Road, while the state installs new seawalls and sheet pile walls to protect the structure. The contractor would demo the approaches on one half, the northern half of the bridge first, fortify and rebuild that half of the approach, and then flip to the south side of the bridge and do the same thing, all the while maintaining one lane of traffic, alternating traffic, using temporary traffic signals to manage traffic. The cost of this repair is estimated at just under $4.5 million, and would be fully eligible for participation by the Federal Highway Administration. Upon completion of repairs under option A, this bridge would still require full replacement in 2027, as previously scheduled, at a cost estimated at $14 million. Option B would be a full replacement of the Little Pine Island Bridge now by the FDOT contractor, at a total cost estimated at $7.65 million. As we indicated earlier, the 2027 estimate to replace the bridge is $14.4 million. In this option, Federal Highway Administration would likely only participate in the cost to perform the permanent repairs that we showed in option A, so the county would be responsible for 100% of the difference, the $3.3 million difference, to replace the bridge now. There's a chance that we could convince Federal Highway Administration to participate in the full replacement of the bridge, based on the scour damage that was experienced. But the worst case would be the county would be responsible for this additional $3.3 million. In this particular option, the full replacement of the bridge would include only a four-month delay in traffic. Basically, what would happen would, the north, the north side would be demoed, just like on the repair option, but the contractor would build back. on the repair option, but the contractor would build back with, including the future shared use path that would be included on the north side of the bridge. And then when we go to build the south half of the bridge, we could maintain two lanes of traffic using that newly constructed shared use path on the new portion of the bridge. So this would reduce the duration of, of traffic impacts to only four months. A full replacement of the bridge. Start construction in the spring of 2024 with an eight-month construction schedule for completion before the end of next year. With that, based on the impact to the public, staff is seeking the board's recommendation to move forward with a full replacement of the Little Pine Island Bridge now. Full replace. Close to $7 million based on the projected cost to replace the structure in 2027. The Federal Highway Administration will participate in at least $4.5 million of the full replacement and potentially in the entire cost to replace the bridge. Worst case, the county would be responsible for the additional $3.3 million at 100%, while lessening the impacts of traffic through Mat Lachey from six months to only four months of alternating traffic on Pine Island Road. With that, we are here to answer any questions you have with regards to the Little Pine Island Bridge.
So Commissioners, what, I think what they're looking for is which option do they want us, what, do we want them to bring to a future board meeting for final determination? We're not going to make final discussion, final, final decisions today. We're basically just going to let them know which one we want to bring to a future board meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Option, Mr. Chair, if you will, option B, obviously if we're going to be committed to resiliency, we need to go there. We also have opportunities as we're working with our state delegation and legislators to understand what our CIP needs are. So if there's truly a, a dollar amount that we need to do this, it solves an issue and addresses, truly addresses resiliency. To me, all we're going to do is repair something in A and wait a couple of years and have to start all over again anyway. I mean, it really doesn't seem to be much of a decision, at least that's from my point of view. Option B.
B. B. I do have one question though. We talk about a lot of different issues, but Randy, I know we've had some challenges with the companies that can do this work. And as we look at timelines going forward, I mean, do we have the capacity if we want to pull the trigger on something to engage people? What's our limitation based on the companies that are available?
FDOT has contract out there already, working, working on the, they're going to repair the washed-out area through Mat Lachey and they're right there on the bridge as well. They have the contractor on board already.
They're starting construction on May 1st to start building the temporary road.
I know we've had some issues other areas with, with, which the quality of work or the amount of people and vehicles and so on and so forth. I, you know, we're all talking about compressing this thing. I just want to make sure not only we have the materials, the timelines and the priorities, but we also have the resources available to get these.
So this contractor is Ajax. They're the, they're the builder on the project. They've hired RS&amp;H to do the design for the design-build portion. They're the, they were also part of the team that has done the Sanibel Causeway repairs. They're the McGregor side, but from the Toll Plaza East. Ajax is a reputable contractor that we've worked with on a lot of projects and they have a lot of experience on design-build projects.
In addition, they, they're going to drive sheet piles on 60 feet long sheet piles, three foot wide to interconnect. They weren't going to start until July. They came early. We're starting them up now. They're starting in next month or so.
Thanks.
I, I agree with my colleagues. I think one thing, Mr. County Manager, you could do too is you could work with the community engagement department too to maybe, I don't know if we could get a, a drawing or a picture or rendering of what it's going to look like, the temporary, where it'll be open for one lane and then where it'll be open for two lanes, but temporarily for a while, just to help answer the questions for the public. Because I think that's, that's going to be the obvious question when the public hears about this one is, well, so how can you replace a bridge, you know, and how are we going to be able to get to and from.
Right.
Home and work and all that kind of stuff? So if we can show them, you know, that maintenance of traffic plan to help answer their questions on the front end, I think will help ease, ease that.
Commissioner, we have that and I, I absolutely can provide that to the community engagement team.
Yeah.
We'll get on that right away.
Okay. All right, any other questions or?
Yes, sir. Just one quick review of the day and if this is all good for you, then I think we've had a good afternoon. It starts with the tiered projects, transportation projects. We will identify all the transportation funding sources and the number of dollars. We'll project that revenue by category for the next five years. We'll have to make some assumptions, but we'll, we'll make that projection and then determine if there's any category or any, any capacity, additional dollars by revenue source. We'll do that analysis. And then we will add additional points for additional capacity, reducing congestion and safety. So we'll put those priorities at the very top. And then for the Little Pine Island Bridge, it's option B, which is replacing the existing bridge and seawalls at an estimated cost of about $7.5 billion and the county shares a little over $4 million. And we will begin the communications program right of way to show maintenance of traffic. Did that get it?
Sound like you got it all?
Yeah. Be good?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. We're adjourned.